Meeting, if you're ready, Donna.
Yeah, let me just turn on this recorder. I do too. Okay, we're good.
Okay, great. So I will call the meeting to order at 7:03 and this is the special meeting for Thursday, May 6th, 2021, to review a couple of changes to the proposed changes to the zoning regulations. Before we get started, I'll note that this is a web-based call. We are operating under the following procedures. A session is being auto-recorded, just like every other session, but because this is on Zoom, we will also be recording the video proceedings. To ensure sound quality, the default for everybody will be to have their microphone on mute. The commissioners will generally stay on mute unless they want to be speaking, unless they are speaking, and their video will be on. We ask that anybody making, anybody from the public making public comment, turn their video on and obviously unmute themselves so that we can see and hear you. But if that's not available to you, then we will still allow you to, well, we'll still hear your comments. And then, because this is a Zoom meeting and remote, I ask that everybody be patient with each other. Trying not to talk over each other and and respect the voices of others. So with that said, then I will, I'll jump right into the agenda. Actually, sorry, let me, we already talked about which we weren't, we weren't recording one night when I did the roll call. So we have four commissioner members present, so we do have a quorum. We'll elevate others to voting status as they come in if they do. And is there anybody in the public who has business before the commission tonight? Okay, hearing none, then I will jump right into the new business, the public hearings and 3A1. And I will read the public hearing, if you just give me a moment to pull it up. This is 3A. 4124. 4124, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading the proper notice. So this is the public, this is the public notice. The Town of Kent Planning and Zoning Commission shall hold a public hearing via Zoom meeting on Thursday, May 6th, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM to discuss and possibly act on changes to section 4124.26 of the Town of Kent zoning regulations dated February 16th, 2020, with regard to the conversion of existing buildings for residential uses. Any corresponding documentation will be attached to the legal notice, which can be found on the town's website. At this hearing, persons may participate and be heard. Please note, written communication must be received by the Land Use Office no earlier than 24 hours prior to the meeting. And the Zoom meeting number can be located on the official agenda that will be filed on the Town of Kent's website a minimum of 24 hours prior to the official Zoom meeting. So I will open the public hearing at 7:07. And I will jump right into, reading into the record, the comments from Kristen Floberg, the planner for the, Donna, is it, is it Western Connecticut Council of Governments? Okay, so it's abbreviated as WestCog.
Right.
And their comment to our submission of the proposed changes of the regulation is that the opinion of WestCog staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities and the regional staff is making no comment. And the the second notice that I will read into the record is from the Northwest Hills Council of Governments, the NHCOG. And the comments are that the NHCOG staff has reviewed this referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the known concerns of neighboring towns. This referral response will be sent to the Land Use Administrator and Chief Elected Official in each of the neighboring towns listed above. And questions concerning this referral should be directed to Janelle Mullen at the Northwest Hills Council of Governments. And the neighboring municipalities are Warren, Washington, Cornwall, and Sharon. So with regard to the proposed, who else is here with us anymore? No, that's it. Okay, so with regard to the proposed changes, this has to do with a change in the village commercial for the permitted principal uses by special permit. So everybody's had a chance, or everybody has the ability to take a look through this, what the regulation says and what it's proposed to say. So I will open the discussion to members of the public. And if you wouldn't, if you want to speak, if you turn yourself on, you know, put your camera on, turn your camera on and raise your hand, then we can call on you if there's any public comment. Okay, so I don't, I don't see any public comment, so then I will ask the members of the commission if they've got any comments to this proposed regulation change. I will say that we went back and forth a couple of times in our regular meetings regarding this regulation change. It seems to me to say what we had hoped it would. And then I would ask if there's any reason to keep the public hearing open. Then I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thanks, Daryl. Thanks, Alice. Okay, all those in favor, so signify by saying aye and/or raising your hand. Aye. Motion carries. Karen, you're on mute and we can't see you, so we're going to count that as three votes. Four and, oh, hi. So raise your hand if you're on mute, but raise your hand if you vote aye. Okay, so that's unanimous. That's all four of us. So we've closed the public hearing and the next steps are for the four of us to discuss the merits, if necessary, of this regulation change.
Matt?
Yes, Alice.
It's just a question. The word adequate, is that too vague a term? I'm not saying that it, were we adequate arrangements for parking? It's okay with me. I just, obviously, it's okay with whoever wrote it, but you know, we spend so many hours and time on parking spaces. I just thought it.
Yeah, to me, adequate, to me, this sentence means that we will be using our
Regular.
Parking regulations.
Yeah.
The parking requirements within our regulations to decide what's adequate or not.
Well, that's what I assumed, but I just thought I'd inquire.
Okay, so I think it's okay as written, but it's a good point, that's, you know, that's, you know, there's the fine line between, you know, being too, you know, nailing and putting too fine a point on it.
Right.
Because, you know, I spent four hours on the phone this afternoon with lawyers going through a contract and which we could go that route. I prefer not to. Okay. Any other comments, Daryl or Karen? Fine, then I would call, well, I would, I would ask for a motion.
There is a resolution of approval in that folder?
Right.
Oh, there is. Did you just add that, was that added today, Donna, or was it?
I actually added it this morning. So there's one for this and then there's one for the next as well.
Fine, great. Let me just get to it. Okay, there it is. So if one of you are inclined to
We have to read the whole thing?
I would say, Alice, that if you said that you should read the resolved section, the result.
Right.
You could say what's currently there and then read the two, and I would read the whole thing after that.
Okay, don't fall asleep. Here I go. Okay, resolution of approval, resolve that the Kent Planning and Zoning Commission make the following changes to section 4124.26 of the Town of Kent Planning and Zoning Regulations dated February 16th, 2020. Changes to section 4124.26 from adaptation, adaption, adept, adoption of an existing building or buildings for multifamily residential use subject to the following provisions. There shall be at least 4,000 square feet of lot area for each dwelling. No proposed development shall be approved unless connected to the town sanitary sewer system. And C, adequate provision shall be made for the collection and disposal of the garbage and refuse. And such facilities shall be in conveniently located areas enclosed and visually screened from view. Two, adoption of one or more existing buildings and/or structures for residential use, including multifamily residential uses, subject to the following provisions. There shall be at least 4,000 square feet of lot area for each dwelling unit. B, no proposal, adoptions, nor any additional associated development shall be approved unless connected to the town sanitary sewer system. C, adequate provision shall be made for the collection and disposal of garbage and refuse and such facilities shall be in conveniently located areas enclosed and visually screened from view. D, adequate arrangements shall be made for parking. In adopting the above, the commission states on its record that in the commission's judgment, the proposed amendment satisfies the factors of the commission, satisfies the factors the commission must consider in reviewing such amendments as set forth in the Plan of Conservation and Development and the Zoning Regulations of the Town of Kent, adopted by the Kent Planning and Zoning Commission this May 25th, 2021.
And we need a second.
I second the motion.
Okay, thanks, Alice. Thanks, Daryl. So I, in reading this, mostly in listening, that, the first word that we used twice, I went back and looked in the regulations and it's actually missing a TA.
Yeah, adaptation.
Right. That's why I stumbled on it. Maybe that's a word I don't know, adaption.
Yeah, no, it's funny. It didn't come up as an underline, like, hello, this is not a word. So, but yeah, I will make that change to the, to the regular.
In two changes. In those two locations. So Alice, you accept that modification to your motion?
I do.
And Daryl, you accept in your second?
I do, but I'm going to start using that word.
Adaption.
So is there any further discussion? Then I would call the vote. All those in favor of the regulation change, so signify by raising your hand and/or saying aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, motion carries and what's the next step, Donna? How long does this take to go to be incorporated?
Well, according to my, the actual date could actually be one day after the date of publication, but then he also said it should be 15 days. So if I publish it on the 11, then the 15 days would bring me to May 25th. That's why I chose that date. And then it's just a matter of getting all of these changes into the regulations and filing them with the town clerk. And then it's a done deal.
Great, great. And would you, would you let us all know when it's filed with the town clerk? So then we can go in and drag the new, the new version, because it'll be, it'll be a new version adopted on that date. And we can throw away the February 20, or the February 19, February 20, whatever it is.
February 20th. So what will happen is for the June 10th meeting, then the owners of the property can come in and they can do their change of use from what they're currently, from what they're currently being, what they're currently, what they currently are, to residential. So that, you know, it's just, it would be a simple site plan change and, you know, not a difficult thing to do. And I know that they're working, they're currently working on, on the interior of the two buildings and that's fine. I don't have any problem with that, but, you know, some minor stuff. Then they would just file site plan for June, change of use, and then they're good.
Good. So Mr. McPhee and Mr. McPhee and Mr. Kukoris, we'll look forward to seeing you in, in, in June.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Great. Okay. Then we're going to go right on to the and we're looking at Agenda Item 3A2. And I am going to open up that series of documents. And this is 3124. Okay. So I am going to read the public hearing, the public notice, and the Town of Kent Planning and Zoning Commission shall hold a public hearing via Zoom meeting on Thursday, May 6th, 2021, beginning at 7:00 PM to discuss and possibly act on changes to section 3124 of the Town of Kent Zoning Regulations dated February 16th, 2020, with regard to the addition of number 10 Conservation Developments and the addition of a new section 6700 VR1 and VR2 Conservation Development Standards. Any corresponding documentation will be attached to the legal notice, which can be found on the town's website. At this hearing, persons may participate and be heard. Please note, written communication must be received by the Land Use Office no earlier than 24 hours prior to the meeting. And the Zoom meeting can be located, the Zoom meeting number can be located on the official agenda that will be filed on the Town of Kent's website a minimum of 24 hours prior to the official Zoom meeting. And as with the previous Agenda Item, we have two pieces of correspondence, one from Kristen Floberg, who is the planner for the WestCog. And her note is that the opinion of WestCog staff is that the proposal is of local interest and with minimal intermunicipal impact. Therefore, it is not being forwarded to adjacent municipalities and the regional staff is making no comment. And then the note from the Northwest Hills Council of Government, their comment is that the NHCOG staff has reviewed this referral and finds no apparent conflict with regional plans and policies or the known concerns of neighboring towns. This referral response will be sent to the Land Use Administrator and Chief Elected Official in each of the neighboring towns listed above. Questions concerning this referral should be directed to Janelle Mullen, Northwest Hills Council of Governments. And the neighboring municipalities, neighboring towns referenced are Warren, Washington, Cornwall, and Sharon. So I'm sorry, I should have opened the public hearing before now. So I will open it now at 7:24 if we can stipulate that that those two documents were read into the public record. Okay. So with that, there, I know that Paul Smansky is here and he is the one who was, he had some motive to help us rewrite this regulation, but he was also very helpful and instrumental in getting us to this point. So with that, I will invite Paul, if you have anything to say, Paul.
Yeah, I'll just say it.
Sorry, just one, sorry. So this is additional text regarding conservation subdivisions in the Village Residential District, VR1 and VR2. Conservation subdivisions are currently allowed in in VR1, VR2 by the subdivision regulations and also conservation regulations are permitted in the rural zone. And this, this tries to conform our regulations. So with that said, now, sorry, Paul, I won't interrupt.
No, no, you sort of, that was going to kind of be my summary. Paul Smansky, for the record, Matt, just did a wonderful job summarizing. Just, we had, we had worked collaboratively together with Donna and Glenn Chalder. We had some initial iterations of the regulation. Over time, it kind of developed and as time went on, we incorporated any suggestions of staff and Mr. Chalder. And, you know, I think it's a good document. It provides for a much larger protection of open space near the downtown, which is the VR1 and VR2 zone. It allows for the connection to public sewer so that it minimizes any impacts to the resources in the area. And I think it's a pretty tight, tight regulation. It encourages basically compact development to minimize impervious surfaces and runoff. So I think it will afford the opportunity for numerous benefits. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Paul. Is there anyone in the public who would like to make a comment? I see Joss is
Yeah. Hi, everybody. You'll spell this here. So I haven't read the text. I couldn't find it anywhere. I didn't see it with the agenda or didn't see it online. So I'm afraid I haven't read any of the text. I just know what I heard at the previous meetings in January, February, when this was discussed, I was listening in. And found very interesting. The original proposal with lots of pages copied or somewhat changed from the original rural district conservation development. I thought that was unnecessary and overdone. And Glenn Chalder made some good suggestions, but I don't know how it ended up looking. So it's very hard to comment, but I want to give some, some general comments now. I, I think it's in general good to have smaller lots and to have more flexibility in layout and set some important land aside. So that's one good thing. On the other hand, it only can apply to two parcels really in the district or in the village residential parts. So the one parcel is the one that you're probably looking at, 13 acre parcel opposite, what is it? The Lane, Cobble Lane, which is a very scenic parcel and I'd hate to see that developed. It's part of the northern gateway. It's a down character area. But on the other hand, I know it's in Village District and it is allowed to be zoned to 30,000 square feet lots. And I wouldn't mind going smaller if you can then keep some of the land protected or some of the view hopefully protected because it has great views of the mountains across the river. But then I don't know if it makes sense in the other parcel. There's a 30 acre parcel off of Johnson Lane, which it could apply to, but I don't think there's too much conservation value there apart from some prime farmlands. In a case like that, if it has to be developed densely, I would prefer that you'd say, well, you can do smaller lots if you add affordable housing lots to it. I wouldn't do a conservation development there. So I think it's spot zoning to do it for this one parcel. But I'm not necessarily against it. Like I said, if it has to be developed, then do it in a nice way. I do have a couple of other questions, but I don't know if you want to react to this at all. And so what, for example, I want to know what is in the section 6700, how the standards, how long is that? What does it, what does it say?
Do you want us to read you the?
Oh, there.
You want us to read you what's in the
Well, you don't have to read it. Just, I mean, I don't know how much it is. It's not the whole stuff that comes up in the conservation developments for the district, for the rural district, right? Because a lot of it is not applicable, I think, for in Village District.
Well, you would, you would look at the section 6700 in our current regulations, which I'm sure you have access to, Joss.
Well, there is no 6700 now. 6700 is new, totally new.
Here's the resolution of approval, which is basically just the new regulation that's proposed.
Okay.
I don't know why it didn't make it to the website. It was supposed to have been put up. I apologize for that. But here, this is the resolution. So I don't know if you want me to start with the first page, which is, this is just the section 3124.10. If you want to quickly read through it, at least it's here.
Yeah. Okay.
I can make it small.
So it allows like half the size of what, lots half the size of what they are now? Is that right?
That's correct.
And then 40% open space set aside.
Yeah.
Why, why would you do individual lots in this anyway? I mean, you could also do like a planned unit development and you have a lot of flexibility too or a common interest ownership development. And you can put 40% open space aside anytime you want, as long as you don't increase the number of portions, right? Because this just sounds a bit like greenwashing for just the spot zoning thing. And I don't know, it makes it look like more than And I don't know, it makes it look like more than it is.
Yeah, I don't think I don't think it's spot zoning. We've been we've been careful. I mean, you could call it that all day, but it's it's not. You know, we were careful to include this. And as you say, there's 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 not very many lots. In the VR one and VR two district, but there are a few. So yes, it's I I don't believe personally that it's spot zoning. We're, you know, it's we're we're cutting the 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 size of the lots in half, but then also reducing that. The the allowable square footage by fifteen percent. As open space set aside, and then we're reducing that by. To to a maximum of sixty percent total coverage. Not total coverage, but but a minimum of forty percent of the development has to be open space. So you're really.
And can the roads be narrower?
The roads can be narrower. They 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 were asking that the roads be designed as much as possible to. The DOT standards, but also they 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 have to meet the minimum. Turning radii for for emergency. Vehicles.
And so what happens with parcels and that are partially in the. Village residential and partially in the rural district, which is with a number of parcels. This would apply only to the village residential section of those parcels. Does that fill its residential section of the ten acres minimum? If the whole parcel is fifteen acres and three acres are in the village residential and the rest is rural. This this can't apply to the rural district, right?
Well, that is a good question, Joss. I'm opening up the. Maps now. Which parcels would you say are in the that are in the? Half in the the R one and half in the.
Well, this like partial nine forty two nine on the east side of the road. Is a larger parcel and the other Casey parcel nine, what is that nine? Forty two six is a large parcel, but only. A couple of acres are in the village residential because the. After the four forty contour line, it becomes rural district. And parcels on the west side of Route seven. The lower parts are part of the floodplain, and so they're in the rural district.
But we so so in the lower section, they are, you know, on the on the west side of Route. Seven and more, it's really the the west side of the railroad tracks, but we're talking about the the area that's in the floodplain. In essence, is in the rural district and on. On the east side, the rural district is north or higher in elevation of the four forty contour. In the regulations, so I I would say that yes, that the the regulations address above the four forty contour and the. And the hundred year floodplain adequately enough.
So I don't know if that's clear in in here. Maybe should say partial of land has at least ten acres in the village residential. District, otherwise it's not clear if it would. Apply to a partial that has less acres in village residential district, but there's more than an acres.
So what change would you recommend there? Can you give us some specific texts and where it would go, Joss?
Well, let's see. disappeared now from my screen, but it in thirty one twenty four, the beginning word mentions a. Partial of land, which is ten acres or larger. Should be a partial land, which has ten or more acres in the village residential district.
But but that thirty one. Is the village residential. That whole section. Is thirty one hundred is the village center. Village residential district.
Right, but there there are a number of parcels. There are a number of parcels that are partially village residential, partially rural, so that that makes it a bit. Difficult.
Yeah, I tend to agree with Donna.
I don't I don't think so, Joss. The rural district, the rural ones that are down are across the railroad tracks. And definitely designated as the rural zone. And the other piece, I don't even know if you'd be able to do that based on on the elevation. You know, above the four forty five for that.
Okay, so Joss, what are your other, what are your other?
So another thing, have the subdivision regulations been changed because of this or was that beside? Because originally Paul suggested changing the subdivision regulations. And I know the subdivision regulations haven't been redone yet and it has been postponed every time. I think you really should. Prioritize that do that as soon as possible because it it does conflict with the new zone regulations. So I I suggest hiring Glenn Chalder to do the update, the subdivision regulations as soon as possible. So you don't get these difficult situations where these regulations conflict. And we don't want to have individual applicants rewrite the subdivision regulations.
It was Glenn's recommendation to us that we not as part of this. Regulation change that we not change the subdivision regulations and and we in fact do a. An update or rewrite of those subdivision regulations and that's you're absolutely right, Joss, that that that's in the works, but for for tonight's conversation, that's. No changes to the subdivision regulations are proposed.
And when the actual subdivision proposal comes up, it will go through a special permit process. And on a public hearing, I assume.
Yes, that's what this 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 section thirty one thirty one twenty four. Ten is in the. I'm sorry, it's 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 by special permit.
Yeah. So I wonder if you then will get some neighbors who oppose the smaller lots. And they haven't read these change regulations. I mean, I I don't have a problem with it, but I do foresee some people in the area who may object to it. But I guess that's something you have to deal with then.
Yeah, yeah, it's yes, it's it's the the public process is. Varied and sometimes fraught.
And and one last thing, the open space, I don't know what in this particular parcel. What Paul wanted to protect for open space, but. I hope maybe want to. Talk with the Conservation Commission if you have a plan. Conservation Commission may want to give some input on what is the most important land there to protect. Or otherwise, the Kansas Land Trust, if they're the ones who are going to get the open space. Because I assume it's going to be public open space. I I haven't read if it's public or not.
It 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 can be, it can be either public or private, so so the open space can be open for new shed. For use by the by the the owners of the subdivision, the homeowners association or. It it's it it could be deeded as as public space. But that would all come out in the in the application.
So it doesn't require it to be public?
It does not require it to be public.
Okay. And how is that in the rural district? Isn't that required to be public or not?
No.
No. Okay.
No, it 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 can be, you know, it can be managed by by the land trust or a land trust or a or the town or. By the by the the homeowners association and it can be and they can they can make it public, they can keep it private. There are certain requirements that the open space has to include as much of the. Help me pause it. The is the 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 area type one and area type two, what do we call?
Yeah, primary and secondary conservation areas. Yep.
Right, thank you.
So you are dealing with some prime farmland, which is one of. I don't see the. Primary and secondary conservation areas mentioned here, but I know that was one of the things in the town character areas are true. So. There's several things there that are primary and secondary conservation areas and then steep slopes, of course.
Sure. Yeah, that's I think that steep slopes are are part of the secondary conservation, right?
And then this there's also setback from from the main road, right, from Route seven, which would be part of it. So yeah.
Yeah, we we tried just to 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 keep as much. We we tried to maximize our ability to review and to comment on on the the proposed. Subdivision or it's, you know, the future proposed subdivisions, so that we could go through a robust. Public comment, period. I just have a really robust public hearing.
Okay, thank you for listening to my comments.
Okay, sure thing. Is there anybody from the public who has any other comments? And is there any, do the commissioners have any comments while the public hearing is open? Then hearing none. I would, Donna, would you stop sharing so we could thank, thank you? I want to see your preface. So. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing at seven forty seven PM.
My second.
Great, thank you both. So now there's the the discussion with the commissioners. I have, I have two small comments. In. Three one two four point ten G. G says, subjects to approval by the commission. Community facilities to be utilized by the owners within the associated development may be approved. So we're using approval twice, so I'm wondering if. We change that first approval to review, so it would read subject to review by the commission. Community facilities to be utilized by the owners within the associated development may be approved. Does that approve it enough to make the change? Okay, Daryl's got a thumbs up. Okay. And then the other thing that I noticed that I've been thinking a lot about that we didn't include in here is. Utilities. And I I I think it's important that the utilities are underground. So if we could change F, which talks about served by the public sewer. We could either change F and say the development shall be served by public sewer and underground utilities. Or we could have a new G, move G to H and say all utility services sell shall be. Underground and not overhead and whatever, whatever you guys think is is cleaner.
I'm good with either. It's a great suggestion.
I would prefer just adding it to the G to the F. Instead of having to go ahead and move everything down.
Okay, fine. So then the development shall be served by public sewer and underground utilities. Great. Any other discussion? Then I would look for a motion and, you know, Alice, I know I made you read that whole thing before, but I think that that we could make a motion to approve this. As amended, without reading through the whole thing, if everybody's okay with that, then it would save some, it would save some breath.
About me.
I think it's fine.
All right, so Alice, why don't you make that motion then?
I make a motion, let's see, how do I do this? I move that we accept the proposed changes to section three one two four of the Town of Kent zoning regulations dated February sixteenth. Am I reading the right thing? Yeah, okay, February sixteenth, twenty twenty, with regard to the addition of number ten. Conservation developments and the addition of new section six seven zero zero. VR one and VR two conservation development standards.
And I would add, if you don't mind, Alice, as amended by the discussion.
As amended by the discussions. Just accepted, but I've just held and the meeting at on May the sixth. I don't, what do you mean, as amended? The only amendment is, why don't I just say with the amendment, with along with the amendment in item F. That the development shall be served by public sewer and underground utilities. And that's part of my motion.
Great.
Do I need to start over again?
Second.
Well, that's great. Any other comments? Then I would call the vote. And all those in favor, so signify by raising your hand or saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you for your time, everyone. Have a great evening.
Sure, thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
And that. My dear commissioners, is that. So unless there's anything else that anybody has wants to talk about, then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Great, thanks, Alice. Karen, it's nice to see you. Daryl, thank you. Donna, thanks. We'll see you, we'll see you in a week.
Yes.
Have a good night.
Enjoy. Happy Mother's Day, everybody who are.
Happy Mother's Day. Happy Mother's Day.
Yes, mother of children. Okay, take care, everybody.
Good job, everybody. Good job. We needed to do this.
Yes.